In the same way that the mayor mentioned earlier, in Much Wenlock residents may be concerned not only about proposals for Much Wenlock, or supportive indeed, but also those for Bildwass, Cressage and Bridge North. Between them, the sites will produce nearly 3,000 homes over the plan period to 2038. In respect of the preferred site in Much Wenlock, I've received dozens of communications from residents of both Much Wenlock and neighbouring settlements since the consultation opened. The overwhelming majority are in rejection and a couple are in support, including one that authoritatively asserts that the potential development is for 127 houses. I've also been copied in on several messages sent to the town council, including one that asked councillors to consider the welfare of the community and the claims made by the promoters should have proven validity endorsed by independent verification. Given that I anticipate that several members of the public will be hoping to speak for their allotted three minutes shortly, I'd simply ask the town council to consider some questions when formulating its response at agenda items 7C and 7D. Those questions are: Are you confident that any detailed proposal will provide a range of house sizes and tenures, ensuring that it provides homes for all? Do you know the extent to which it will deliver housing for local needs and the extent to which it will provide affordable homes? And will such affordable homes be reserved for residents who can demonstrate a Much Wenlock local connection? Are you satisfied that there will be provision of public open space and recreation facilities, especially for younger people? What will the economic benefit be to the town's traders, other businesses and its workforce? Are you convinced that the capacity of the town's water supply, which is demonstrably incapable of providing sufficient to satisfy existing demand at times, will be sufficient and if and when this proposal becomes a subject of a planning application? Similarly, as regards the existing capacity of the town's foul sewage network, will it be expanded and when will that expansion be complete? Do you know the extent to which the claimed flood attenuation measures at this location will alleviate flooding throughout the town, not forgetting those vulnerable properties on the Farley River as it flows towards the Seven? Do you know the extent to which the community can be assured that the proposed attenuation measures here will guarantee that homes built 17 years ago in Hunters Gate will not flood? The government recently set out a proposed investment of £5.2 billion to create flood defences to better protect 336,000 properties in England by 2027. In that context, will the town council consider when this site is likely to be constructed? If it can provide flood alleviation as claimed, will it be built within the next five years? And if not, will it be used as a reason for the Environment Agency to not invest in flood alleviation measures in our town? And what is likely to happen if the development doesn't take place until late in the planned period? Looking a couple of miles down the road, have you considered the impact of future development nearby, including Bildwass, where there is an outline planning application for 1,000 houses, and at Cressage, where there is a preferred site for 80 houses, which forms part of the local plan review? Has the town council considered this in July? Highways England commented on the builders' application, saying that it cannot support the applicant's transport plan as it connects to the strategic road network? Have you considered the impact of development and more cars on the junction of the A458 and the A4169 and how that will affect pedestrians, cyclists and commuters, especially those heading towards Telford and the West Midlands connurbation from the B4371 and B4378? In the builders' planning application, it suggested that it will provide traffic lights on Victoria Road. What will be the impact of stationary traffic past the High Causeway? Will the proposed roundabout on Bridge North Road reduce the volume of traffic at the Gascoigne Junction? Do you have a grasp of the capacity of the medical facilities in Wenlock and Cressage and will they be adequate for the early growth in the local population? Are you sure that our local schools have the capacity to accommodate the growth in pupil rolls, especially since the new builders' primary is not likely to open before 2026? Does the proposal meet the priorities identified in the Much Wenlock Place Plan? And are you satisfied that the preferred site is in alignment with the policies and aspirations of the Much Wenlock Neighbourhood Plan? Finally, on this, does the town council believe it has consulted the community to such an extent that it has a good understanding of the wide-ranging and in many cases soundly based views of residents? Chairman, the members of the public who don't have easy access to a PC or to a tablet, Much Wenlock Library is now open and should be carrying a copy of the consultation documents. You may have to make an appointment to view them. In other matters, I was pleased to work with a handful of town councillors, the clerk and local residents, as mentioned by the mayor, at the opening of this meeting in a successful application for Shropshire Council's Covid-19 Small Market Towns Fund, which has yielded a grant of £5,000. This will be employed to draw visitors to the town's many attractions, including events and to our independent shops, which of course we are very proud of. I shall be holding an advice surgery at Much Wenlock Museum this Saturday from 10:30 AM. And Much Wenlock volunteers will be conducting a litter pick around the town on Friday the 28th of August. Please let me know if you'd like to take part. That concludes my report. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Turner. Is there anybody, any councillor, that wished to ask councillor Turner anything?
Well, I would if I could.
Councillor Harper, go ahead.
Yeah, a lot has been said about the neighbourhood plan, it's conscious of the neighbourhood plan. And the quotes are that Shropshire Council are riding, coaching horses through the plan. And yet, in section 13, which is ours, Much Wenlock Place Plan, I can see 12 references to the neighbourhood plan in two and a quarter pages. As Shropshire Council, they appear to have taken notice of the neighbourhood plan. Would you agree with that, councillor Turner, as our councillor?
I wouldn't, no.
You wouldn't? Right. And then also at page 224, one of the reasons they gave, the development will be required to deliver substantial community benefits, substantial community benefits. On behalf of Shropshire Council, what are those benefits to the community? I can see some, but what are the benefits Shropshire Council see?
I haven't got page whatever it was in front of me, councillor Harper.
224, it's where it says land adjoining the primary school in Hunters Gate, Much Wenlock, It says a new roundabout access will be provided from the A458 into the site. And then the second paragraph is development will require to deliver substantial community benefits, both on and off the site, by way of flood alleviation. And it must demonstrate that the risk of flooding in Hunters Gate and Foresters' Guard Avenue will be protected. And it obviously refers to community benefits. Now, one assumes, as we in the south of the county get 20% affordable housing, that 120 would bring forward 24 affordable houses. Is that correct? 24 it would be, wouldn't it?
If you say so, yes.
Well, you're the county councillor. I really respect you, David. It's all in the plans, there's even a map. And 10%, you get 10% of affordable housing in the north of the county, but we in the south get 20%. The other thing, of course, would a community benefit be a million pounds spent on an attenuation pond? In the Much Wenlock Urban Drainage System report of 2011, option three was in relation to Hunters Gate and the surrounding area. That was, when they went ahead with Church Stretton Road and Sitch Lane, you know full well those adjunuations, they actually indicated the attenuation on the actual Hunters Gate site, the surrounding area as well, was too expensive for the number of properties that were flooded. Now, we see from the developers, they propose to spend a million pounds, they've had these McCoy consulting look at it, and they estimate it would cost a million pounds for the alleviation onto that site. Would that be a community benefit?
I'm sure.
Does Shropshire Council see it as a community benefit?
Well, I'm sure a million pounds into anything in the town would be a benefit. Whether a million pounds will do the job, and I made reference to that earlier on, whether a million pounds is sufficient to do the job, I don't know. And I suspect there's nobody here who knows whether a million pounds is sufficient either. I don't know.
But obviously, when they put that in the report, they are saying to us it will bring some substantial community benefits. What we've got to try and do is, is that a true reflection? And I was hoping that you as the county councillor might have some idea on that.
Well, I can't represent the promoter of the site.
You're representing Shropshire Council.
I'm here. I can't, I have not the specialist knowledge to know whether a million pounds is sufficient to deal with it, as you suggest. I mean, at the moment, there are no proposals in the public interest, in the public arena, which can be seen. And certainly, I haven't got at my fingertips an expert hydrologist who could ascertain whether the weather proposals, if they're in the public arena, were appropriate. I'm rather hoping, I'm rather hoping that Shropshire Council will be employing specialists to take a look at that proposal, if it reaches the point where it goes into the draft plan.
Yeah, from my point, the question I'm asking is, on behalf of the community of Much Wenlock, Hunters Gate, we've had a petition recently from Hunters Gate residents in relation to flooding they're having. Now, is this the way, will Shropshire Council see it as a way of providing that relief from flooding by having the developer invest a million pounds in that area? Callerton Ash has also got a flood problem. Is this the way the Shropshire Council would be tempted to get that sorted out? And of course, it actually rectifies option three of the Much Wenlock Urban Drainage Plan.
Right, councillor Harper, I said earlier on that the Environment Agency has, or the government, has set out a proposed investment of £5.2 billion. I don't know. And this, I mean, bear in mind, we are talking about a plan which runs for the next 18 years. But the government's £5.2 billion is to be spent by 2027. I cannot commit Shropshire Council or any of its officers as to what it is likely to do over the course of the next five years, or indeed over the next of the 18. I think I've given a quite comprehensive summary of what my views are and what my interpretation is of the plans that are, or proposals that are before you and before members of the public.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor David Jenkins, what would you like to ask?
Having heard councillor Turner's very, slightly complicated, if you wish, response initially, I feel that there are so many questions that need answering from what he's said. These are basically questions, many of which come from concerned local residents. And I wonder, I know we're under huge pressure time-wise, I wonder if we can consider many of those points individually, but not this evening. Because to take in the information that has been given by councillor Turner and answer queries and give answers to queries, I think is quite honestly beyond the remit of this little meeting. I don't want to get into the whys and wherefores of it, but I wonder if, as a group, as a group of councillors, we could, in the very, very near future, just have a discussion about many of the queries and suggestions that have been made? Because it's quite obvious that they can't just be answered on a Zoom meeting. I hope that makes sense. But I really, I really feel that to do justice to our town and to do justice to what councillor Turner's many queries and questions have raised, that we need a bit more time to consider this.
Thank you, councillor Jenkins. We'll certainly come to that later in the evening. Are there anybody else who wishes to ask questions of councillor Turner? No? Right, well, move on to item seven. Statement A is to note that further Regulation 18 consultation and the pre-submission draft of the Shropshire Local Plan will be undertaken between 3rd of August.
Excuse me, Chair?
Yes, town clerk?
I believe you've missed public session.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I'm very sorry, two apologies to those people. I've got my finger over number six, that's a problem. Public session, yes, we have got a number of people to contribute to this session. We have Lesley Durbin, Sue O'Dowd is being represented by John. John, are you there and able to speak to us? Technical hitch there. We'll start. Can you hear us, John? I don't think we can hear John. We'll, can, Lesley?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, that's better. If we hear from Lesley Durbin first, and then, John, you'll be prepared to speak after Lesley Durbin.
Thank you.
Mrs Durbin, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your attention, councillors. I have two questions, one of which surrounds development and the other traffic. And I'm going to give you some brief background to the questions. In terms of development, my question concerns your response to the local plan review on page three to eight, that the development allocation for Much Wenlock has been increased to 200 dwellings. And on page 337, the allocation for MUW012 has been increased from 80 to 120 dwellings. To my knowledge, at the time of writing, there has been no public consultation on both accounts. This is in contradiction to government guidance on neighbourhood planning, which states quite clearly that if significant changes to the development boundary to include a new development are made, then there must be a review of the neighbourhood plan and a referendum. So my question one is, the town council can, and the PEC, can legitimately withdraw their support for MUW012 as it does not comply with the stated policies of Much Wenlock Town Council, which they adopted in the neighbourhood plan in April 2013, and remains the statutory policies for Much Wenlock until 2026? It is not in the gift of individual councillors to make decisions on behalf of themselves which go against the stated policies and the stated wishes of the local community in the neighbourhood plan by majority vote in referendum. Councillors are denying the will of the people. Why do both committees not withdraw their support from the Shropshire Council Local Plan Review in line with the neighbourhood plan? That's my first question. The second concerns traffic, so I want you all to stay awake at the back there. The residential travel plan for 1,000 dwellings at the Ironbridge Power Station development, compiled by ADC Infrastructure, November 2019, estimates the 1,000 dwellings will generate up to 669 two-way traffic movements in a peak hour on the A4169. Southbound from Bildwass, the weekday average is 3,507 vehicles at present. The seven-day average is 3,228. 922 vehicles between 4pm and 6pm approached the Gascoigne Junction on Thursday the 13th of June 2019 on the A4169. 8am to 8:45am, 1,484 vehicles negotiated the Gascoigne Junction from all directions on the 13th of June 2019, of which 82.14% were cars and 13.01% were LGV and the rest being other forms. 5pm to 5:45pm on the same day, 1,502 vehicles negotiated the same junction with similar ratios of type. By the same calculation, development at MUW012 will generate approximately 80 additional vehicles at peak work and school times, with a further 40 vehicles possibly generated from developments at Cressage. Taking the total additional vehicles approaching the Gascoigne Corner to something like 789 extra vehicles on top of the 1,502 counted on a random day in June 2019. Question two is, by what calculation does the Much Wenlock PEC and the Much Wenlock TC see that this extra traffic congestion will benefit the residents of Much Wenlock? And it is only fair to tell you, councillors, that your answers to my questions, which I expect you to answer, will be noted by me and used in a submission to the Inspector of Planning in due course. So thank you for listening to me, councillors.
Thank you, Mrs Durbin. Mr O'Dowd, representing his wife, would you like to address us, please?
Good evening, thank you, yes. I'd like to read a statement on behalf of the Much Wenlock Civic Society, and I will take under three minutes. The substantial changes to the pro-site allocation MUW012 to MUW012VAR and the increase in the overall number of dwellings from 150 to 200 gives the town council an opportunity to reflect on this and other major changes in the pipeline. The Civic Society asks the town council not to support the new site allocation and increase in the total number of dwellings on the following main grounds. One, there should be no major development in the town until the effect of the proposed development of Ironbridge Power Station site is known, and specifically the effect of increased pollution and traffic through Wenlock. Two, present government ministers have endorsed the use and importance of neighbourhood plans. The number of houses can be proposed by the LPR, but then a review of the neighbourhood plan should be used to deliver them. Three, during spring flooding, the attenuation ponds were temporarily almost full. An independent report published in full should be made into all flooding, including a solution found for the existing Hunters Gate. Only then should any building on the adjacent land be considered. Government, national government has put considerable money aside for this. The flooding is far more complicated than just surface water runoff. The site consists of two layers of Ludlow shales above Wenlock limestone, as evidenced by the record of 100-foot boreholes at the National Geological Survey. Rising groundwater does not normally surface until it reaches the park opposite, needs to be taken into consideration. What are the risks to the residents of Farley if the flood solution is not effective? Four, since Grange Fence closed the facility in Telford, there is increased HGV traffic at the Gascoigne Corner. The consequences of increased pollution and traffic on health, plus rats running through the neighbouring streets and villages, has not been assessed. The society believes the main benefit of a traffic island on the Bridge North Road will simply be to facilitate further development. Five, if a developer makes a large contribution to infrastructure, this will proportionately reduce any contribution to social rented and shared ownership properties. The neighbourhood plan proposed that these should be the highest housing priority. If the town council endorses the proposal in the review, it will be endorsing the building of a large-scale development in a rapid-response flood catchment area. This proposal on the most flood-prone site in the town will rely on the developer providing an as-yet-unproven solution to a complex problem. Finally, Howarth has actually admitted in some 20 documents they've recently submitted in respect of the power station site, that there is, quote, slight overcapacity at the Gascoigne Corner at peak times, even before the development of Tasley and MUW12 have been taken into account. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr O'Dowd. Next, Arthur Hill is not well enough to speak for himself, but he has sent his comments. Trudy, town clerk, do you wish to read them or shall I? Would you like me to read Arthur Hill's message? Oh, can't, Trudy, we can't hear you.
Sorry, I don't mind, I'll read it if you'd rather, or if you'd like to, just.
Yes, okay, if you're happy with that, I will read Arthur Hill's submission. Fellow councillors, Mr Mayor in his absence, I intend to do this by bullet points, these are Arthur's words, not mine. In the group publication, Much Wenlock National, Much Wenlock Neighbourhood Plan Refresh Group, which I received on about the 16th of August, it clearly states that no catchment-wide survey has been done. One was done about nine years ago, which is available on the council archives. Another survey was carried out in 2011 by Muschell's, later renamed WSP, which had three recommendations on it. An attenuation pond at Stretton Road, an attenuation pond at the Sitch, and a third at Hunters Gate, if money available. The first two have been completed, £2.1 million approximately, and have done on the whole a good job in testing time. Hunters Gate was not done, though. I believe lack of funding and at the time, less priority. We do know what the best solution for this area is by the work done by Muschell's originally and more recently by McCloy's, a leading expert in the field. We believe that the idea of taking floodwater away through the park and controlling the outflow through a series of pools on the Chiltere River also prevents flooding of Farley and properties such as Downs Mill further downstream. If the attenuation pool is built on the Hunters Gate and pipes were fed in from Oakfield Park, Callerton Ash, Top End of Hodgcroft, et cetera, this would reduce the sewer output down to the Raven by up to 30%. If the pipes were fed in from Hunters Gate and the new pipe from Walton Hills as well, as the Merrywell Lane went into the new pipe across the park as suggested, that would cut off straight away the overbearing of the sewer pipe that runs down Barrow Street, effectively removing these from the system. We do not believe as a flood group that these proposals go against the national flood strategy as a solution to the problem, as a solution to the problem can be produced, which not only benefits this end of town, but also helps in other areas of the town at risk from surcharge. If we accept the neighbourhood plan for small developments, how will this help the flooding problem in Much Wenlock? Because the water would have to go into existing stormwater drains, which are already at capacity and will contribute further to the flooding problems. Finally, people who say they want the problem of Hunters Gate flooding solved then grasp this opportunity because the government won't pay, DEFRA won't pay, RPA and the Environment Agency won't pay, and Shropshire Council cannot pay. The developer, under close scrutiny, has to pay. Finally, can I make one further point? As I understand it, the neighbourhood plan went for scrutiny by Mr Ashcroft, the public examiner, and he put a red line through some of it, including the low housing recommendation put forward by the neighbourhood plan. He accepted the Hunters Gate site as the recommended site by the neighbourhood plan, would increase the housing allocation on there. Thank you for reading the point, says Arthur. So I pass that to you for your thoughts. Now, our last speaker tonight is Chris Bounden. Chris, are you ready to speak?
Yes, I suppose so.
Right, the floor is yours, Chris.
Reading this, I've got a few minutes to say this. You've heard all the points, and the key element of this is that there's a fear of flooding. There are several solutions that are abounding that can be helped to aid us in flooding. Our difficulty is, are the town prepared to accept the cost? You hear that it's going to take £1.4 million in the last conversation we've had with some of the designers and developers to put some form of flood solution in at Hunters Gate Two, as we call it. Yep, where's that coming from? Arthur's told you, it's not going to come from the government. So who's going to pay for it? Developers will have to pay for it. My problem is, as David Turner has very, very carefully pointed out, what we don't know at this moment is what is included in the proposal. My discussions with the council in the past few days have been along the lines My discussions with the council in the past few days have been along the lines of, what questions should we ask the developers to make sure what we're going to get in the proposal? And what we don't get in the proposal, where is that water going to go? It can't cope with everything. The catchment area is quite large. If it does cope with it, what doesn't it deal with? And some of the things like the flooding coming off the back of the cemetery? Is that going to be included? That needs a drainage system through the main road, which is the responsibility of Shropshire Council. Never been done, never been put right. There's lots of little things, nuances in the middle of all this that need to be taken into consideration or included in the project. But we don't know if they are. We don't have enough information at this moment in time. It will not fix every problem in the town. It won't stop the flooding down the main Bridge North Road halfway, halfway up, opposite the garage, nope. It won't stop the flooding that's coming down Borden Road, nope. That'll have to be done another time, in another way. We are solving the flooding in Much Wenlock step by step. What I will say for David Turner is his points are very valid and I hope we've got a very good copy of them and we should weigh those up in a separate meeting. You should weigh those up in a separate meeting and give care and consideration to it. But, at the same time, you need to understand you need money to solve this problem. This developer is offering the money. Don't care whose pocket it's coming out of, it's coming out of whoever buys the houses. Now, we're back to the low-cost housing. Twenty percent we put to one side. Well, we've done that anyway, no matter what the development is, whether it be in tens, twenties, thirties or forties. We've got twenty percent of it. I would agree with one point that Arthur has raised. If you put small blocks of ten houses or fifteen houses around Much Wenlock, you're going to plug on to an existing system that cannot cope. We've proved that in the areas around the extremities of Much Wenlock. You'd be tearing up half the town. If you want to build your hundred and fifty homes by two thousand and fifteen, like you planned in your neighbourhood plan originally, we're going to have two building sites around Much Wenlock in different locations, every year, active. All that traffic going through the town centre in various directions, two different directions each year. Here, you've got one site, one axis in and out the main Bridge North Road. It's a lot less traffic, it's straight on the main road. Yeah, I agree. It's a good chance to solve some problems and bring benefit to the town, but it ain't going to solve all the problems. Choose if it's a good benefit, a good solution, if it's good enough for us, if we need it. We can come back to the neighbourhood plan for the next rearrangement and that will happen in the next five years, as their own document says. We'll be asked to build more, we're a growing country. The issue for us is how much do we want to grow in Much Wenlock? And do you want one on your back door, behind your house? I've got no choice, they're behind mine and the water comes into my property. So I have to say now I have a vested interest in this. I'd like not to flood this year again. The last time was two feet deep, twenty-four inches, four inches in the house, two inches in three rooms, four inches in one room. First time in fifty years, I've lived here all my life. My father built these houses, they would not flood normally. They've only flooded because Calatton Ash failed this time. Now, this time, we're not going to put it in the shale, we need a proper solution. Pipe it out, control it and put it somewhere, the great pond, the great pool, good idea. So the question now is, councillors, do you want to be man enough to stand up and grow the town for the next range of development? Or are you going to let the little blocks of ten houses go in with the odd one or two low-cost houses in different areas all around the town and have the rest of the town torn up to put bigger pipes in for the next ten years? Not a good idea. Do it in one site now, take that thirty percent benefit that Arthur is talking about. It will give you extra capacity down the main system. It'll give you a couple of years' breathing space to start putting that right. That's the way forward. That's all I got to say, thank you very much indeed for your time. Please listen to the voice of the people. They are what we are supposed to follow. But we've got to step through all the mud and find a solution that benefits the town and the people. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. And we'll move on to the next item. In addition to the people who have spoken here tonight, we do have a number of people that have contacted the town council via email. And the town councillors have received all the emails, but I'll just state the people we have heard from at this point. Kate Griffiths, Christopher Gray, Helen Hill, Howard Horsey, Clive Warley, Jim Orves, David Tillie, Robert Toft and Chris Tyler. Thank you for your contributions. Now, I've already spoken, I've done item seven A. I would like to rearrange items B, C and D and take item, the one that is down as D, as item seven B, to consider the proposals for Much Wenlock contained in the draft local plan and to agree a response to the consultation. Now, I've made a summary of eight of the main points raised in those emails that have been detailed, heard people's name, I've forgiven already. And I'd just like to make some comments about those before I open the conversation to the councillors. The first point I think we mentioned already a great deal tonight is flooding. The statements have been made from those people for the need for an independent report on all flooding and the solutions for Hunter's Gate before any building. You've heard both Arthur Hill and Chris Bowden's reports, which offer a solution for flooding on Hunter's Gate. To summarise what's been done so far. We've had two reports, councillor Harper mentioned them already, and this year we have had a very in-depth report from McCloy Company from Northern Ireland. As Chris Bowden has said, we don't know the whole text of that, sort of that investigation. But those investigations in that site have been done and I'm sure in the fullness of time will be made known to us and we look with interest at what they have to say. The housing numbers, the statement in the draft local plan says two hundred, but in reality, since the local plan will cover the years two hundred and, two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and thirty-eight, we have already provided since two thousand and sixteen, thirty-two completions, twenty-one granted permission and may already be in construction, leaving not two hundred, but a hundred and twenty plus twenty-seven winfall properties. The twenty-seven winfall properties made up by the small developments and odd infills. So the target for new houses is not two hundred, it is one hundred and twenty. The third point that has come through loud and clear is, why choose Hunter's Gate? Why not the alternative site of MUW-008? Mr Ashcroft, the independent neighbourhood plan assessor, in his report in December two thousand and thirteen wrote that the site at Hunter's Gate was agreed by all, meaning all parties in Much Wenlock, as the optimum location for a housing allocation. Where has the suggestion of using site MUW-008 come from? Shropshire Council, in preparation for this new local plan, looked at a number of sites around the town. Of a rigorous three-stage study of all of them, I'll just turn the paper over, of the offered sites, they did not find this site, the one that has just been suggested, as suitable as Hunter's Gate. Two town councillors looked at the, the same sites that had been put forward and came to the same conclusion as Shropshire Council, who also, they conducted their own independent investigations. The fourth point, neighbourhood plan, the disregard of the neighbourhood plan. Neighbourhood plans were intended by the government as development plans, not non-development plans. I'd like to ask councillor Harper just to give a very quick rundown on the strategy of neighbourhood plans. Councillor Harper, would you be happy to do that?
Yeah, well neighbourhood plans are exactly what, neighbourhood development plans are exactly what they're saying. There's a very good report in the House of Commons library. If anybody wants to look it up afterwards, this briefing paper number zero five eight three eight of the twelfth of October two thousand and eighteen. And it's neighbourhood planning by Gabriel Dart and Grimwood. And in that, it clearly indicates that neighbourhood plans, the first set of neighbourhood plans are very much non-development plans, but neighbourhood plans are very much development plans. And a number of communities want development to keep their shops, to keep their employment, to keep their social facilities going. And they seem to be the ones that it's intended for, to actually keep, to actually encourage development. Now, the problem is, in some neighbourhoods, it occurs, especially the early plans, it was very much a non-development plan. And if you read that document, research by Reading University indicates that. And the problem we have is very much that people see the neighbourhood plan as ensuring non-development or, it, it seems to be a worrying thing. But in fact, statistically, you're likely to get an increase of ten percent over the number of houses that you're indicating. And certainly in May two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, the referendum, the people of Much Wenlock voted for one hundred and thirty dwellings. On, there was no allocated site, but one hundred and thirty dwellings were to be built in the urban area between two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and twenty-six. So that, the people signed up for that. And as you said, Mr Ashcroft, in his report, the problem is, Mrs Durbin indicates the April two thousand and thirteen plan that was submitted by the Much Wenlock Town Council, but unfortunately the housing part was refused by the inspector. The examiner, Mr Ashcroft, on the nineteenth of December two thousand and thirteen, he wrote, policy H three and the associated housing allocation RES one, which is the Hunter's Gate site, does not meet the basic conditions. I will re-recommend him that the policy is deleted from the plan, which he did. And that's why he held his hearing in Much Wenlock. And in his report, which was in February two thousand and fourteen, as you rightly said, chairman, he actually pointed out that, and it's page five, page sixteen, and it's paragraph five point three eight, if anybody wants to look afterwards. On the first point, and this is about Hunter's Gate, it is accepted by all concerned that a housing allocation in the Bridge North Road area is the optimum location for housing allocation. It has the ability to relate well to existing housing development and is accessible both to the town centre and to the primary school. This general occasion for an allocated site has been supported by the community. Now, that's Mr Ashcroft's paragraph in a thirty-eight page report. What he did, he examined it on behalf of Shropshire Council and then he then passed it back for the referendum. Now, how do we argue about that? A number of people have raised about the Hunter's Gate site. How do we possibly argue against that when the town council, the neighbourhood plan group in two thousand and thirteen clearly agreed at the hearing that it was the optimum site? Does that give you a few ideas about?
Thank you very much, Mr Councillor Harper. The next section that I picked out of the, the comments refers to social housing. This site, if supported, would bring forward twenty-four homes. Small developments do not contribute unless social housing providers bring forward a small development, for example, Calatton Ash. We understand that Connexus are set to be working on a similar-sized development at the moment, but at which location, we have no information at this site. The, I apologise for the clock. Mention of the power station at Bildwass and Tasly, I'm going, we will discuss at item D. It might change order. And then, the pressure on local services, schools, doctors. I think there is nobody in the town council who would not agree with that. But unfortunately, they are never provided before developments. They're always seen to be seen in retrospect. We know Shropshire Council have been involving themselves with education bodies. They have been talking to the schools to assess the capacity. And we understand that certainly Williams Brook School are perfectly happy with, to take the, an increased number of students. They have no problem with accommodating them. The, the primary school, I haven't spoken to, but certainly they have been consulted by Shropshire Council. Traffic issues, unfortunately, this is a very ever-increasing problem with or without extra housing. It's a national concern and unfortunately it rarely influencing housing allocations. The roundabout promised in the new local plan. There's a response to helping with the extra traffic generated by the site. And more particularly, I think for most town councillors, the point of the roundabout is to slow the traffic on the Bridge North Road, something we have been trying to address for many, many years. And, and there has been a rumour and I have read items of saying that there will be increased, increased traffic in Barrow Street. Our understanding is that the traffic will be directed onto the Bridge North Road, not through the centre of the town. Yes, Gasco corner will always be a bottleneck. But no one has the correct answer to that, they have done surveys. The only alternative is something that Milner Whitman, councillor Milner Whitman, has a solution for and one that nearly happened some years ago. Councillor Whitman, would you like to enlighten us?
Thank you, chairman. Well, yes, I mean, if, if we're going to talk, talk about traffic, I mean, the only solution, as far as I can see, is, is to have a bypass. A bypass was discussed in the town, I mean, it's, it's twenty or thirty years ago now. When I was a district councillor, Derek Hill was the, the Shropshire county councillor. And we did discuss it, we had a public meeting at the, at the, at the Priory Hall and it was fully supported that we should have a bypass for Much Wenlock. Unfortunately, I didn't get their bypass and ours fell off the, off the radar and we didn't get our bypass. But the only solution, I, I would say to the Gasco corner, is a bypass of some sort. I mean, I, I agree with everybody that said it's an awful bottleneck. I mean, it's terrible, I, I walked past there today. The traffic coming down Bridge North Road, it wasn't Much Wenlock traffic, it was coming from the, the conurbation and the, the snows where. But it is a huge problem at the Gasco corner, I agree. But I don't think this particular development is going to make a huge difference to that, yes. But when we come to talk about Bildwass and Tasly, it may well be. But certainly, the only solution as I see as far as the traffic's concerned is a bypass, Jim.
And that may be, I think, is something for councillors to take, to take note of. Councillor Thiemans, did you want to come back on that question?
Yeah, thank you, Mary. I just wanted to reinforce what Milner has just said that. I was very impressed with Lesley Durbin's analysis of the traffic. I don't, yeah, I, I think the biggest problem is not going to be this proposed site. The big problem is Tasly and, and Bildwass. And I, I think the, the lack of thought about Much Wenlock from these other developments. Remember the local plan that we're looking at, it's not just Much Wenlock. We must, we can't be parochial like this. We have to look at the big picture and the big picture says that we are going to be having a huge amount of traffic from elsewhere. And whether we, we think it's achievable or not, it is absolutely essential. We, we, you know, pin our colours to the mast on this one and say that we can't support the local plan without this recognition of the traffic problems that other developments are going to have. So, really, I'm advocating, you know, look, let's look at the bigger picture.
Thank you, councillor Thiemans. What we will do now is to, I'll open it up to councillors for their comments. And we're talking particularly tonight about the allocation of the housing numbers. And the, the consideration at the Bildwass Power Station will come at seven C. So can we just restrict our comments to the, the housing situation at the moment? Any councillors wish to make a comment about the Hunter's Gate site, bearing in mind what they've heard from the number of speakers that we've heard? Has anybody got to say?
I'll just go, I would just go over a little bit.
Carry on. Carry on, councillor Harper.
Yeah. The issue of the allocations, we were previously a district centre. As some of the councillors may know, some may not, we've been a district centre, that's the term they gave, we're now a key centre. And in the Shropshire local development, adopted core strategy, which was adopted in March 2011, and that covered the dates 2006 to 2026, the dates are always confusing because the different reports come up. 2006 to 2026, the requirement for Machwenlock, on page 51, if anybody wants to look at it, we were required to identify, we were up to 500 homes as an identified district centre. So over 20 years, Machwenlock would require up to 500 homes, and that would be a build rate of 25 per year. Then the neighbourhood plan came along, and the neighbourhood plan is relative to 2013 to 2026. Now, unfortunately, as I said before, the actual submission by the town council was changed by the inspector. The actual steering group wanted 25 on the RES1, as it was known, which was the Hunter's Gate development. That was actually refused by the actual examiner of the plan. And he came and held the hearing in Machwenlock, and that brought forward a target of 130 in the urban part of the parish. Now, that's important because they didn't restrict, they put a restriction on development in the rest of the parish, but certainly in the urban area, what's known as the bowl of the parish, there was a target of 130 between 2013 to 2026, which is a 13-year period, and that equates to a build rate of 10 per year. Now, the draft local plan, we are one of 11 key settlements, and appendix 11, appendix 5, if we've all looked at it, gives an indication of the actual development requirements in relation to the key settlements. Now, we, as a key settlement, are one of the lowest actual rates at 200. If you remember, a lot of the key settlements, we're going to be required to provide 150 dwellings in those key settlements, and we were at 150. It's now been increased to 200. But if you look, if you equate the key settlement area, such as Brosley is 250, you've got Albrighton 500, but also you have to take into account their community hubs as well. Because the likes of Bishop's Castle, although they've got 150, when you put in their community hub as well, they actually have 305, which is, of course, more than us. But we have the community hub of Cressage, which would equate to 80 houses, so ours is 280. But Bishop's Castle, even though they've got 150 in their actual town with a community house, they're required to provide 305. So, yeah, I read what people say about 200, but in actual fact, that in the course of the 22 years of the draft local plan, equates to 9.09 units per year. So the build rate for the years has come down from 25 when we were a district centre to actually 9.09 units. Now, I know it adds on to each one, but those are the, if we were going to suggest that we shouldn't have 200, how do we get it over to a planning inspector that we are being hard done by, when you're saying the build rate has actually come down? That's the problem we would have, I thought, is trying to equate that. And then, yes, the actual Hunter's Gate, people say the Hunter's Gate, well, the inspector does really make it clear in his report that that was agreed and supported by the community. One assumes the community understood that when they voted overwhelmingly for the neighbourhood plan, that they were voting for that as a possibility.
Mary, can I add to that?
Of course.
Please. Yeah. This site was actually proposed by the neighbourhood plan steering group. We looked all over the town, and this was agreed as the most suitable site for development in and around the town. We looked at all the sites as possible. Now, the problem was that the steering group suggested 25 houses, which of course is ridiculous, is unviable. And as you know, the last proposal was that 80 houses should be built here. Well, we're now, I mean, we're now talking about 120 dwellings on this particular site. But this site, make no mistake, this site is the site for development, which, as Bert's just said, the people supported. And this site is the site that will be developed for housing, make no mistake about it. The question is, you know, whether this suggestion of flooding will deal with it or not.
Thank you, councillor Whitman. Any other comments from councillors? Anybody wish to add anything?
Chair?
Yes, Trudy.
Could I just say, I've noticed that some of the members of public are using the chat to make comments about the discussion. Obviously, in a face-to-face meeting, they would not have the opportunity to speak at this stage. So I don't know if it might be advisable to ask them, please, not to use the chat to express their opinions on an occasion when they would not have that opportunity in a face-to-face meeting.
Thank you very much for raising that. Participants, did you hear the statement from the town clerk, which I totally endorse? Please do not chat in a situation that you wouldn't normally be able to do so. Perhaps I could ask one of the young members of the council, who is very much interested in providing homes for young families. Natalie, would you be prepared to give us some thoughts about a development of this size? You live on a similar development, don't you, at the moment? What is your view?
As I'm sure most people do know, that I do not live in Machwenlock. And I got on the council from having the shop and being within the mile radiuses allowed. But I do live on a housing estate that was rejected by Brozeman Council ironically. You know, this is so hard, and I appreciate all the emails I've had to my personal cancer email. Sorry, I've not been able to reply to all of you, because as you can understand that, you know, we've had quite a lot. Building 25 houses, as was suggested, that I've heard, you know, I can see why that would have been rejected, because, you know, it's not viable on such a land. And also, Hunter's Gate, although it is quite old, it's not old in terms of the buildings in Machwenlock, so Hunter's Gate was this development, you know, 10-plus years ago in the making, so similar to what we're talking about now. Wenlock, without doubt, does need more family homes. And it's not about just now, it's about the next generation that we need to think about, your children's children, children, children. And as a nation, we are growing, you know, take my family, it is a little bit extraordinary, but I have five children. I would love to live in Wenlock. It's not possible. I lived in a council house, out of interest, it was number six Bridge North Road, a three-bedroom house, not suitable for my family. Had there been a suitable property in Machwenlock, without a shadow of a doubt, I would have stayed in Wenlock, it's a beautiful town. What I'm really concerned about is that Hunter's Gate got kind of a rough end of a deal with Persimmon, and through no fault of Machwenlock Town Council, that drainage should have been done. Questions that I have got going through in my head right now is, what happens if we don't have these houses? How long would these people, how long would the residents be prepared to wait to get flood alleviation sorted? What options are there, really? Because, let's face it, Shropshire Town Council, are they going to really do it, like was mentioned with Chris and Arthur? Have they got the funds? I don't think they have. But is this the answer? Building houses to solve a problem that has already existed? But yeah, Wenlock does need more houses.
Thank you for the thoughts of the younger generation. I think, it is, for councillors, it is a stark choice. We have been presented with a proposition and really very little time to discuss it, and without a great deal of information, but that's the nature of local government. For me, I think that the biggest question that Machwenlock has to think about in the coming years is flooding. It's top of the tree. Now, things have changed, things have moved on since the neighbourhood plan came into existence. Now, I moved into the town itself, although I live not very far away, I moved into the town in 2009. And if I remember rightly, shortly after we moved into the town, the neighbourhood plan were collating information for the neighbourhood plan. Now, at that time, we're talking 10 years ago, flooding happened in Wenlock, it's always happened in Wenlock, but it was just accepted. It wasn't top of the agenda. There wasn't the pressure on climate change. 10 years ago, the world was quite different. We didn't have the storm surges that we're having now. There was not the awareness of climate change. That has made a fantastic difference for the worse than the Wenlock. Yes, we've got the two attenuation ponds, which certainly are helping, but it's not enough for the town. We've got to address flooding. And as Arthur so eloquently put in his statement, there is no money. The town council had a ration, if you like, of 2.1 million pounds of the attenuation ponds. Great, fantastic. But as I understand it, the Y and Seven Catchment area, or Seven and Y Catchment area, who allocate money, have decided for the foreseeable future, the bulk of the money from the government will go to alleviate flooding along the rivers, which people who live along the rivers have suffered for the last few years. So where do we get the money from? Whether there is a Hunter's Gate 2 built or not, there will be a flooding problem. We have an opportunity, as I see it, to help, to right a wrong. The first Hunter's Gate was not successfully completed. The drainage on that was not correct. We have a problem at Calatton Ash. I would like to say at this point, as chairman of the planning committee, we pestered and pestered the information on drainage for the Calatton Ash development. Councillor Harper and I constantly visited the site, we asked and asked, we asked what the company is now called Connexus, we asked Shropshire Council, could we see the drainage plan? None of which was forthcoming. Now, that's a few years ago. I think now flooding has gone right to the top of the agenda. And I genuinely believe, perhaps I'm being naive, I don't know, but I genuinely believe that this flood of alleviation could not, would not dare to be done wrongly. There is too much at stake, there are too many people watching. Flooding is such a dreadful thing, wherever it happens, but we should, my hope is, the town council, if they do agree to this development, can work very closely with Shropshire council. The flooder group, led by Arthur Hill, have established a very good relationship with the new flooding man at Shropshire council, John Bellis, who has an excellent grasp of the problems in Machwenlock. And I have met him, I have spoken to him, and I am happy to believe that he will look out that any development is done, particularly concerning the drainage, is done in a correct manner. We have to put our faith in experts, we don't know, but we have some very knowledgeable people, particularly in Chris Bowden and Arthur Hill. They know the town, together with Trevor Charles, they know the town, I think they know every drain, every gully. And I would suggest that we are better informed about flooding in Wenlock, and we are better at looking at what is going on. For me, this comes down to a very stark choice. I understand all the questions posed by Mrs Durbin. The problem is that we're genuine, like anything, we don't always have the answers. We don't know, we don't have enough information. I have sympathy with councillor Jenkins' view, that we need to discuss it, the questions further. We have till September 30th. And the problem is, as you are well aware, getting meetings arranged, face-to-face meetings are impossible. We are in a very difficult situation. I would ask for anybody to make any further comments before we see if we can come to some agreement as to our response. Yes, councillor Park.
Thank you. I've only been a councillor for a short time, but in terms of what I've seen in terms of recent issues that the council has been facing during my term so far, in this particular order, there's been three main problems that I've been asked to face. The first of those has been flooding. That's constantly raised throughout the year, and in particular, February this year, because of course, what happened with the town. The second of those is being affordable homes. The amount of people that I hear, on a weekly basis, just there's nowhere for their kids to move out, get a place of their own, who want to stay local. Obviously, having some affordable homes in Machwenlock is a very pressing point for the community. And the third is to do with speed and traffic calming. I hear countless complaints about the speed at which vehicles enter Machwenlock, from different directions, of course. So these are three kind of key points which are at the top of my mind, because they're constantly raised, and certainly have been since I've become a town councillor during my short time. I've got to look at this development plan. And in a way, this development plan offers a part solution to all three of these pressing recent issues. It does address some of the flooding, it does address some of the affordable home situation, and it does address, through the form of the roundabout, slowing the speed at which traffic enters Machwenlock from Bridge North direction. And I really appreciate all of the emails that I've received, because I've had a lot of people talk to me, a lot of people contact me, and there's a lot of information, as Mary says, to process in such a short amount of time. But I really appreciate the time that everyone's taken, and I really invite everyone, please submit your comments through the consultation to Shropshire council before the deadline at the end of September, so that all of these things can be taken into account. And, yeah, there's a lot to think about, and it's a very difficult decision to be made. There's obviously benefits, and there's obviously negatives, as with anything. So please, by all means, know that this is not an easy decision, and I've had a lot to consider. That's just all I'd like to add.
Thank you very much, councillor Park. I think...
I'll just come back, Mary.
Yes.
Yeah. What is, the affordable housing provision is built into the local plan. If you look at page 64 of that local plan, it's DP3, you'll see that the actual percentage for the south of the county is actually set at 20. So any developers would be required to actually, if it's five or more dwellings, they would be required to provide 20% of the housing that's affordable. Now, that's written into page 64 of the plan. In fact, there's a map as well, that we fortunately are in the south of the county. If you're in the north of the county, then you get a cent of affordable housing. And the other thing, flooding, I've read, various people have said that there's nothing being looked at in relation to, Machwenlock in relation to the flooding. Now, after the 25th of June 2007, when the flood occurred in the daytime, we had that many reports afterwards, and the best one, the far, by far, the best report, and if anybody likes to look at it, is the Cheltenham Reiki report done on behalf of Shropshire council. Cheltenham Reiki Report done on behalf of Shropshire Council, that is fantastic report. It really indicates everything that's required in Much Wenlock. Now, Shropshire Council then went on, you just remember when Simon built the actual Hunter's Gate, it was done under Bridge North District Council. It was not completed under Shropshire Council. Shropshire Council then commissioned their own consultant, Michelle, who brought people from all over the place, experts from all over the place. And that is, again, a very, very good report, which was published in 2011. And I don't think any other place in Shropshire has had such a report. And they came up with the three options. And option three is the one that we're talking about in relation to Hunter's Gate. But at the time, it was considered to be too expensive to, and the best value, unfortunately, they were not, to get the best value, you need a lot of properties being affected. Well, Hunter's Gate, we believed at the time, a number more properties were affected on Hunter's Gate than people would admit to. The problem with flooding is that a lot of people will not admit to flooding, because they get concerned about selling the property, they get concerned about insurance. But when it comes to working at its best value, it works against you. But certainly, Much Wenlock has had more reports on flooding than any other area in Shropshire, and I suspect others. And of course, that's why it's been recognised as a rapid response flood catchment area, which is one of 300 in the country, and we're at the highest level. But if you read the actual local plan, that's taken, it is taken into account. We are, there's a map of the flood-prone areas in Shropshire in the plan, and we are in the top 10. So they do recognise it. It's just that, at the moment, there's nothing to stop housing being developed in a rapid response flood catchment area. And Shropshire Council are bound by the rules as well as everybody else, like you know.
Thank you, councillor Harper. I mean, obviously, as individuals, as individual residents, you're perfectly free to write your own comments to the consultation, and I'd urge people to do so. What we'll have to discuss tonight as town councillors, what is the best for the town? Now, I've been sort of conducting, I won't say covert, but I've been speaking about and to many people, what I call the silent majority. Now, the neighbourhood plan consultation that they had about the housing, at the point of, was held in the Priory Hall. On the, the information that was put through my door, it was emphasising that 100 people attended. Well, the population of Much Wenlock is about 2,000. 100 people is not a very massive proportion of the feelings of the people. And the information that I have been given is very, very straightforward. The silent majority that I have spoken to individually, or friends of mine have asked and supported, what is the most important? What do you feel about the housing development? They have no problem with the number of houses. We need houses, we need affordable houses. That is not a problem. But what they're concerned about is, one, the flooding. They must get the flooding sorted out. And the second point that is made further, we want affordable housing. Now, the scheme that's been proposed, it would give 24 units. That does not mean there wouldn't be any other. As I mentioned earlier, Conexus are working on a scheme, we understand, for more affordable housing. And the other thing that hasn't been mentioned tonight, but we've not been able to find details, a great deal of money would come into the town by way of community infrastructure levy. I understand the government, in their latest planning statement, are making some changes, but there is no indication that sale will not continue to be paid. We can't let say what kind of response we'll get by way of benefits to the town. This would be used, again, for infrastructure projects. It would come directly to the town. I can only tell you that what we got from the Calle de Nash development, it comes from a slightly different fund, but the principle's the same. We received as a town council £36,000 on a development of 12 houses. It was used, as you've all, I'm sure all of you have seen, the improvements that have made in the Gaskell field, and will continue to be made. That £36,000 was put for community benefit in the town. Now, as far as I'm concerned, we have to make a decision. We have set aside tonight to make a decision. I understand councillor Jenkins's questions. I think we could make an overall decision as a town council general response to it. I see no reason why we couldn't at a later stage, take each of those questions that was posed. Perhaps Mrs Durbin would circulate her questions, if she hasn't, I think she already has done to me, but whether she circulated it to everybody else, I'm not certain. I think we could certainly consider those questions, but I think we haven't got much time to give a response. We have to make a decision together. We decided to have this extraordinary meeting, rather than take out the time out of the ordinary town council meeting, because we have lots of, lots of things to discuss at once-a-month meetings. I mean, I personally think we could take a vote tonight on this particular aspect. And we'll come to the question about build was in Tassley in a moment. I think that we certainly could consider all the questions, but we only have, as I say, till September 30 to make further comments. Councillor Whitman.
Yeah, chairman. Well, can I thank you for what you've just said. I think, I mean, we've had a very good discussion, and I appreciate all the representations that have been made from both sides of this argument. It's very difficult. But make no mistake, I mean, this site will be developed. We now have a proposal for 120 dwellings. And what's been said, the important thing is that 24 of those dwellings will be affordable for local people. The big issue, of course, as you've just said, is the flooding. Now, do we, I think we all want to see the end of flooding, or as much as we can. And this, this proposal, provided it's, we can be sure, if we can be sure that the plan is sound, and we should support this for the good of the town, chairman. We will also get the, the traffic will go out onto the main road, it won't come into the town. And the point you've just made about the community infrastructure levy, I don't know how much money we get from that. As you said, we got a lot of money for the Gaskell ground, and what a good job that's made. But I think we're talking about many thousands of pounds that will come if we support this scheme. So chairman, I would like to make a proposal if that's agreed, if you agree.
So I think councillors who wish to speak, Duncan, am I right in thinking you wanted to say something first?
Yeah, I mean, I listened to all of the points. And I think the important point I want to make is that we're all representative of the town people of Much Wenlock. And I've had quite a few emails sent direct to me. I'm sure some of them have also gone to other people as well. And I feel obliged to, to follow those people's lead, because they don't want a big development. It's as simple as that. They don't want a big development. They're quite happy with the neighbourhood plan with small developments. And I know all of the shortcomings of that, and the viabilities of that. But nobody wants a big development. Now, that is a big feeling that I'm getting from the, all of the emails. Every single one has said they don't want a big development. And I know that puts us in a very envious position, because it does look like we're not going to get the flooding sorted out unless we agree to the housing development. Now, I feel that we're almost being blackmailed into that. I don't think we're being given the choice. And I think that's wrong. And so I agree with the people that we should seriously consider objecting to the building of 120 houses. Where were we consulted? Where was anybody consulted when it suddenly went up from 80 to 120? We weren't. Nobody was. And I just don't feel that's right. And there's no doubt about it that an extra 120 houses will have a massive effect on the infrastructure of our town, which is creaking already. But the overwhelming feeling is that people don't want a big development. And I think, I think as a representative of the people, that I've got to make that point.
Councillor Harper, you wanted to come back?
Chairman, I don't think that's correct, is it? Because wasn't there a consultation by the agents down at the Priory Hall? There was a consultation, wasn't there, with the public, with the community?
Yes, I think you're referring to...
What Duncan's just said is incorrect. There was a consultation. And if you, you know, if berries pick up on that, they, they would say there was a consultation. So I think that's incorrect.
I don't know if it's incorrect. I think we've not been consulted about the increase. I think we've been told about the increase. I think there's a huge difference.
Yeah, I think...
I've got a copy of what they put out, and they do indicate there, and their reasons. And that was put to the public. So I don't...
That's, that's not consulting, that's telling us.
There was no consultation.
I don't class that as a consultation, so we'll have to agree to decide.
I think it is a consultation. In terms of what the Shropshire Council would require, that is a consultation, I would have thought.
Yeah.
Councillor Park.
Sorry, chairman?
Yes, councillor.
I think we've had a lot of consultation. I think we're all agreed that we want to see the end of this flooding. This is the main thing, as far as it's concerned. We aren't going to get an end to flooding unless we support this scheme, as far as I see. There has been consultations about it. And I say this is a site that was agreed on. Can I make a formal proposition, chairman?
Can I just, just say, just come back to councillor White, Duncan White. The people who have sent emails to you are probably the people who've sent emails to me. But they are not the majority. As I said, there is a very, very silent majority who have completely the opposite point of view. And how do we, how do we unpick that? I don't know. I mean, we're, as a town council, you must do what you feel is best for you. But I think we have the stark choice, as I outlined. We want flooding sorted, we get houses. We don't have houses, we don't have big development, we don't sort the flooding, it's as simple as that. So councillor Whitman, if you'd like to make your proposal.
Well, if I can make a formal proposition, chairman, I, we're never going to agree on this. We've always had big debates in Much Wenlock when anything like this comes about. And we've had debates for and against this issue. As you say, a lot of people are too concerned about this. Many, many people want the affordable housing. But what we all want to see is the end of flooding, if it's possible. And I think this scheme, we've got the flooding group who work very hard on flooding, and they know exactly what they're talking about. I appreciate what Mr Bowden said to us about the flooding issue. And I think we can deal with the flooding under this plan, chairman. So what I'm going to formally propose is that Much Wenlock Town Council have no objection to the proposed housing allocation, the housing allocation number in the revised local plan, section 13, Much Wenlock Place Plan Area. We welcome the importance which has been placed on flood alleviation, both on and off the housing allocation site. It's M U W O one two V A R, brackets Hunter's Gate 2 site. And it's mentioned at page 224, with Mr Harper saying 225 of the document. And the statement that a roundabout will be provided for the A458 into the site. The town council also notes and supports the many references to the Much Wenlock neighbourhood plan throughout the Shropshire pre-submission draft local plan. I think that's the fact, chairman. And I therefore formally propose that resolution.
Right. We will take a vote on that proposal. Those in favour of that...
Do you want the support? You need a support, I think, chairman.
A second, could I have a second?
I would second that, then, yeah.
Thank you, councillor Harper. Right, could we take a vote? Those in favour of that proposal?
Can I just ask, are we going to do a recorded vote?
It's too late now.
Should have been asked for it.
You should, you should ask before, actually. The technicality is, you should ask before for a recorded vote. Chairman, it's your decision, but the actual, the actual requirement is to be made before the actual vote. Yeah, chairman, it's your decision, but I'm saying, could we have a recorded vote?
Councillor White, you were, you were in favour of having the recorded vote. Can I just...
No, 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 no. The, the actual, the actual proposal by Duncan, or request for a recorded vote, was made after the second proposal. I think you'll find that, it's up to the town council to explain, but I think you have to ask for the recorded vote before the vote.
What I was going to do is to see whether the other councillors would agree, in retrospect, for councillor White to ask for a recorded vote. Is that be acceptable, councillor Whitman?
Can we hear from the town clerk what the legal position is, chairman?
Right. Trudy, could you help us on this one?
We always have this, we always have this.
I confess, I, you know, as far as I'm concerned, that the request has been made before the vote's been taken. But if, it might, yeah, I can't, I have to confess, I can't comment on the legal position of asking for the recorded vote after the proposal's been made. I really don't know. Certainly, the request was made before the vote was taken. So if, if all...
I have no objection to recorded vote, if that's the case, chairman. I have no objection to recorded vote.
I have no objection to recorded vote. You have to, I don't know, is Eric still about? Because Eric's the expert on it. We've had it a number of times. You have to really get in first and make sure, well, it's a recorded vote.
Eric Humphries, are you listening to this debate? Clearly, he's listening, but not answering. I don't have a problem with, with...
I don't think there's any problem with it, because it's just a...
I think Mr Turner wanted to say something just then.
Councillor Turner, did you wish to say something?
Well, yeah, thank you. Thank you. If you look at the standing orders, it says, at the request of a councillor, voting on any question shall be recorded. And such a request should be made before moving on to the next item of business on the agenda.
Right. We haven't yet moved on to the next item of the agenda. So we can, I'm happy to allow a recorded vote, councillor White. Are you content with that?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. So now, can we, can we vote? Those in favour of the proposals outlined by councillor Whitman? Those in favour? Right, that's, town clerk, can you see the numbers?
I can see you, and I can see councillor Matt Park has his hand up, and councillor Walter.
Councillor Whitman.
Whitman.
Councillor Whitman, who proposed, and councillor Harper, who seconded.
Right, I've got that number.
Okay, so I have, in favour, I have councillor Whitman, councillor Harper, councillor Hill, councillor Matt Park, councillor Alan Walter, and councillor David Jenkins. Is that correct?
Yep.
Right, those against? That's councillor Natalie Borg, and councillor White. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So the proposal, the proposal is passed, but we will, I can understand people's anxieties, and I'm sure we will come back to this matter at a future, future occasion. Pardon?
Is Marcus around?
Yes, I'm just thinking, he's not.
He's not there.
Has he gone?
I can't see him.
Can you contact him, Trudy, or not? Is he gone?
He's not, he's not in the meeting anymore.
We can't count his, we can't count his vote if we can't see and hear him. We'll move on to item 7C. Do we need to add anything other than what we've already said in our submissions to the build... to the, uh, Builders Power Station site? I know councillor Harper was very keen, but, uh, we, we brought it up again. Uh, we have made a considerable, um, contribution to that consultation. Um, I don't know that there's anything extra. Councillor Harper, is there anything else that you wish to add to our?
I think there is, I think we should reinforce our very strong objections to Ironbridge. It's, as councillors would know, it's actually in the document S twenty, strategic settlement of former Ironbridge Power Station. And they propose in one thousand dwellings and six hectares of employment land. And the difference is, this is one of the strategic sites. There are two strategic sites, the one at Turnhill, uh, and the one at Ironbridge. And then there is another, uh, Cosford. The Cosford one is very much about bringing in aeronautical employment in the area. Um, so, but it's quite different. But the Turnhill one and the Ironbridge one are very much focused on their strategic commitments. So it's, if you like, they set it aside from the actual other areas, the principal, um, areas and the key areas, and they add these specifically onto Shropshire. Now, the problem is, is that we have strongly objected to the Shropshire outline one nine zero five five six zero stroke out and Telford and Reiki, T W C two zero one nine stroke one oh four six. And also the Shropshire Midlander Extraction Application nineteen oh five five zero nine, M A W. Now, they put this in the strategic plan as well. So we really should, I would think, be reinforcing our objections, our strong objection to that. One of the interesting things is that when the actual local plan, this local plan process started, Shropshire housing allocations were going to be twenty eight thousand seven hundred and fifty. That was in November two thousand and eighteen. Now, if you look at the details in this draft local plan consultation, the allocation for the, uh, for the county of Shropshire has increased to thirty thousand eight hundred. Uh, so that's an increase of two thousand and fifty. And the interesting part is, if you read the actual documentation, is that, uh, one thousand five hundred of those houses are intended to meet the requirements of the Black Country Plan. So we are providing in Shropshire, one thousand five hundred dwellings for the Black Country Plan. Now, the question, the local plan has so many things, doesn't it? It's got the climate change, it's got all about transport and everything like that. And I personally can't understand why Shropshire councillors are being, uh, so generous in providing one thousand five hundred dwellings for the Black Country Plan, when that will clearly, I would have thought, include many people that will be travelling back to the West Midlands, uh, congregation to work. Uh, are they being very over generous with our area? But we, our submission was that one thousand houses were of extremely detrimental effect on the actual World Heritage site of Telford. It will have a, certainly a major input, a major, uh, input into traffic, et cetera, if we're allowed in Much Wenlock. Uh, you know, because they will certainly be travelling down towards Starbridge and that sort of area. So I would have thought we should strongly reinforce our objections to this development taking place. We are, we seem to be providing these one thousand five hundred houses merely for the Black Country Plan. Um, it seems we locally will suffer for the Black Country Plan.
Do you think, in, in your opinion, do you think we need to add anything to what we've already submitted, councillor Harper?
Oh, well, I would have thought the overall objection is to this section two zero, strategic settlement, former Ironbridge Power Station. The other thing, of course, the, that, they talk about thousand dwellings. One of the benefits we saw in the early stages, they were talking about twenty hectares of employment land. And now that's reduced down to six hectares. So, you, you know, the bonus would be if it was bringing quite a large employment to, uh, facility to the area. But they're only talking about six hectares now. But we're, uh, having one thousand dwellings. And if we recall, when we discussed the Ironbridge, uh, applications, those thousand dwellings were on the greenfield site of, the greenfields of the actual development. Rather, you know, everybody thinks the Ironbridge Power Station development is actually the brownfield site, but the housing houses were taking place, were being built on the green area. There were lots of issues that we raised and we did put substantial, uh, objections into Shropshire Council and also, uh, the cross-border application to Telford as well. So I think we need to draw attention to those, reinforce those, but also say that, you know, it's, even before those applications were decided, they put it into this, uh, consultation in relation to the local plan.
Uh, councillor Turner, are you able to enlighten us as to why we're, as Shropshire, are providing houses specifically for people from the Black Country? Councillor Turner, are you, are you still with us? Clearly not. Um, well, might I suggest that, um, this, the time is getting on.
Councillor Turner's not, councillor Turner's not a town councillor, so he can't speak. That's why he's not answering.
Thank you. I was just going to ask him a, a particular question, that's all. Uh, councillor Humphries just wanted an answer to the question. Um, my suggestion would be.
Very kind of you to call me a councillor.
Sorry, Mr Humphries. It's, it's habit, you were, you were here for such a long time in that, in that role. Um, my suggestion would be, uh, to, uh, not make any decisions tonight as to our response to the, uh, the power station site. But we have a town council, uh, meeting coming up and I would suggest we put it on the next town council agenda to revisit our comments and, um, in the light of what councillor Harper has said in the new plan, uh, the changes have been made, that we discuss them further after our normal town council meeting, um, on the, what, second of, of September. Is that, would that meet agreement with the rest of the councillors? We discuss it on that day since time is, is, is going past. Do I have, um, a show of hands, people who would be willing to leave it until, uh, the next town council meeting? I think that's the majority, I can't see everybody. Uh, town clerk, can you see the, the hands for that? I haven't got everybody on screen. I think the majority are happy to defer it until the, um, the next town council meeting. Is that okay? Town clerk?
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you, thank you very much indeed. Right, we just, um, Tasly and Buildwass, the effect on the town. Um, we can discuss obviously that at the same time at the town council meeting. I would like to say, this is my personal opinion, I do not understand why there is such, um, uh, ex, um, what's, whatever is the word, uh, the Tasly development. I cannot understand why, uh, you, you think it is going to affect Much Wenlock. As somebody who's lived outside Shropshire, has lived in the Black Country and has lived in South Staffordshire, I do know work patterns of people. If you are going, you've got a big housing development coming at Tasly, why do people go to live in a certain place? Generally, it's because of ease of travelling to work. It may be familial, uh, reasons, if you've got, uh, family in the, in the area. But let's look at Tasly where it sits. If you are going to buy a house at Tasly, the chances are you're going to work either at Telford, you're going across to the Wolverhampton end of the Black Country, you're going to the Starbridge end of the Black Country. Where will, how will you travel there? If you're going to Telford, you wouldn't come up to Much Wenlock, you'd drop down onto the M four four, the A four four two and onto the expressway. If you're going up to Wolverhampton, you go directly up the Bridge North Road. If you're going to, uh, the Starbridge end of the Black Country, Abriely Hill, that area, you would go up the Starbridge Run. Why would you, the, the, if you were going to work in Shrewsbury, unless you've got direct connections with Tasly, you'd buy one of our house on the, one of the many estates at Shrewsbury. I cannot see that there is going to be much extra generated traffic from a Tasly estate. I really can't understand it, if you're going shopping, you're not going to come to Much Wenlock, you'll go to Bridge North. So I, I really don't understand, I would like somebody to tell me why you think the Tasly, uh, development would have a dramatic effect on, on Much Wenlock? Because I personally can't see it. The Ironbridge Power Station is a completely different kettle of fish, as far as I'm concerned. But, um, again, those two items go together. The power station and the effect on the town of, uh, Tasly and Buildwass. I, I propose that we also discuss that at the next town council meeting. So everybody in favour of that, um, element being left till the town council meeting? Thank you very much, that proposal's carried. Um, let me get to my agenda. Um, we note that the next town council meeting, I said the second, it's the third of September. I'm not into September yet, so I'm not certain of the date. Thank you very much to everybody who has taken part. It has been an interesting evening, lots has been said, lots of the things to think about. And it, it certainly won't be the last conversation we have about the, the draft local plan. So, uh, thank you all and good night, everybody. Good night.
Thank you, chairman.
After watching booking off to your own.
Well, I could just close the meeting if I wanted. You have to click on leave when you leave, Mary.